Knowing that we maybe have some set aside money couldn't okay this and get this process started this evening?
He could. The ones they shut down, like you remember on the tour, we saw that the wheelchair bus was sidelined. Those I fixed without coming for board action because I had a transportation budget. We are now at the end of our budget. We've told Transportation I need to fill up the tanks with gas. We've got enough gas to get through the year, but don't do a refuel in there anywhere. So I would need your action to go ahead because there's no more money in the transportation budget.
So it's your pleasure. This is officially a discussion item. Would you like to get started with this? Or do you want to wait and do it all in one action later?
Andy will be at the next meeting, he said.
What about you? What is your preference?
My preference would be to go the top four bosses and just get them going.
Just make an action item now?
That would be my preference here. Well under, you know, sixteen thousand dollars. You've got to get them fixed either way.
We don't have money for new buses, so we have alternative other than...
Even a used bus costs just as much as a new.
And Transportation Committee has gotten together on this and talked about this.
We did tours. We've been down there.
Yep. Well, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the repair of the first four there on the list. Motion by Pat to okay repairs on nine, ten, twenty-four, and sixteen.
I'll second.
Jerry has seconded. Other discussion? Okay, all in favor of the repair of these four buses for the amount stated, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Jerry. Right on top, our favorite, not magic six.
Sorry. Who would you say?
Jerry. New business. Under the consent agenda, these are approved essentially in one motion unless you have some issues with any particular item. So we have time to look at the consent agenda items of each personnel attendance. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Seconded by Pat. Kurt, did you second him? Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Jerry. Prove of the expenditures per may.
The other night there, here's a hard copy board. We kept it around with Michael. No one else wants to look at it?
Richie in South, thirty-seven, one-one-four.
Full open, high don't care. We are looking for a modified, as far as safety, so they're being replaced with eighty-six little bit newer, original blocks. They have already replaced them.
Can I comment from this person? When they're outside many maintenance, can you look that up too? Should they be sitting directly on the ground or on the concrete? You look at them some of years and they've got these pallets that they sit on because it just, you know, it prolongs the wear on these. Because if they're sitting on the ground, I think that moisture gets up. Is that an issue at all to these?
The guy from Ridge is upset them up and stuff like that. So that's a better sitting on that. You haven't seen Pat there. But the answer we have now is soon as they're done with tracts, then they'll be brought into the field home. Say the last one's like twenty-five years. These are non-conditional or full guaranteed for past four years.
If we can't complain about twenty-five or twenty-six years, can we?
Thirty-seven, two-two-six. He wants to be funded.
I'd replace it. It's good place to add a couple of more movers. DM two, Tommy.
Oh, yeah, I wanted to add a couple of watercoaters or something that were pretty old, but they still...
So like a regular bus, so you're talking about like rails and the gym, the water pumps?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
What about thirty-seven, one-twenty-one, is it a computer chair?
I think there's computers. I think the bridge there, they were probably salvaged here to begin with, but they're in pretty good shape, so they need to be replaced.
Is that a computer mouse or?
Yes.
Anyone else? If not, I would look for a motion to approve. I'll make a motion. Motion by Jerry. Seconded, seconded by Pat. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Jerry. Approval of the Jeff family leave?
Yes.
Request from custodial employee.
Real simple, someone had knee surgery. Should be back in about six weeks.
Contractually, this is something we need to take care of.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat. Seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That is Jerry. Review of the custodial contracted services and local seventy proposal. Twenty-twelve, twenty-fourteen contract. Yeah, would you like to open?
Yeah, I sure can. Many people know, and obviously the board is well aware, that we had looked at contracted services. It felt like the right time. We had looked at contracted services with food service and transportation most recently. We did look at those services and certainly, you know, looked at the cost savings that was involved in that. A lot of pros and cons that go along with that. But we did sit down with local seventy, and the negotiators were Bob, Pat, and Rob. And went through a negotiation process that I think maybe you can touch on even in more in depth. But I thought it was really, really good to sit down. It was very... We just got a lot of things covered and a lot of things done. So I was really pleased. If you look at the contract that's listed in here, some really great things for the district. And I think it's great that we can keep our local crew on and still Cannon Falls employees instead of, you know, maybe contracting out. So I think overall, the process went really well. I know there was a lot of previous discussion to that, so we thought that it would be important to talk about it at board meeting.
You know, I actually felt the need. We've got a lot of contracts that we're dealing with, but I felt the need to have this one somewhat separate from the rest because it's been an emotional time for many people involved here with the services. And we had discussion about contracted services. We've had other issues which have taken us close to two years in discussion. And when you talk about contracted services, you talk about a financial savings to the district at that time. But you also talk about taking some employees down in waves that have served our district for a long time. And, but our job is to be diligent with the school's finances. And I would guess after long, long conversations, we were able to get that savings with the union. We got some concessions from them as well as opinions on how we can lower our costs in general. Included in this contract proposal is a zero-zero for the custodians. I can't tell you how long the process has been on a personal level, not only me, but for the people that sit on the other side of the table. And I don't think you're ever too old to learn that communication is the key to everything. Once you dummy up and decide that, you know, we're just going to go forward and and get these things accomplished, whether or not others like it. You know, I'm an old guy. I've been on this board a long time, but you're never too old to learn. So I would say that it's been a good process. And after we've had some conversation with our steward and the union representative, I think we got a lot of things accomplished when we started talking again. And most of those are extremely positive. So normally, I would wait until the end of the meeting, but we have one of our attendees here, our union representative, and our steward as well as the union representative, and I'd just like them to touch on briefly what we have going through and what we've accomplished, I guess. Do you know?
Absolutely. You know, when we started this process out, I mean, I've been to a lot of board meetings. A lot of you have seen me and probably cringe every time you see me on what you're doing. Bob really did hit, I think, on something key. We had a lot of deep, deep discussion throughout this whole thing, and it did start way before negotiations started. We've had some issues that went all over the place, and through all of these discussions and really listening and really hearing what everybody is feeling and why, and coming to an understanding of what's been going on, I feel good about the future. I feel good about Cannon Falls. I think that we, I mean, we knew coming in that, you know, obviously from being at these meetings, there is no money, and we got that. We got that coming in. So the freeze wasn't easy to take by any means, but it was something that we understood. That wasn't the issue. But then we had to, you know, come up with cost savings too. How we did that, I thought, was respectful. I thought it was, I actually thought that this was the best negotiations that we've ever had. We've had some baggage in the past. Right now, I feel like there is no baggage. I look forward to our relationship in the future and hope that before we get to where we were before, that we now talk and really understand because this was the most progressive, not economically for us, but certainly understanding where you're at and where we're at, and I look forward to it. Dave?
I think the best way to sum it up, as far as I'm concerned, is the very first meeting, we just kind of both put our cards on the table and knew where we were coming from and where we had to go, and we kind of got on the same page finally. And I think we can, we can keep going that way, keep the conversation going.
Well, you know, we have had discussion about the contract. You know, I don't want to speak to other members, but I think everybody was disturbed about the contracted services just from what it would do to some employees and some people that have been around a lot a long time. And, you know, just by virtue of who we are on either side of the table, I don't think we'll ever have one of those kumbaya moments. But we have come to some agreements, and it's been, it's been difficult, but I guess fruitful long term. So Pat was an integral part of that. Rob assisted as well, so...
Kinda.
And Beth was...
Sorry. Put now Beth in the room. That's always fun.
Well, you know, there's, again, issues preceding that which I hope we moved on from. And I would look for a recommendation to approve the local seventy contract.
That's something that wasn't just verbally said, not to add on, but the cost savings is about fifty thousand dollars that local seventy group was able to find for us next year. So that is we said verbally that not only is it a hard freeze for two years at zero percent and zero percent, we were able to come really close to fifty thousand dollars in savings. So that was not easy, and there was a lot of concessions on the custodians' part, so I'm very, very happy and proud of that.
And we get it through our great crew.
Yep.
Most important.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt. Seconded. I'll second. Seconded by Pat. Further discussion?
Well, I guess I'd like to just say I'm glad to hear that there have been a negotiation, but it does seem like there has been a lot of also animosity between these groups at certain times, and I hope that we can work together and communicate between that in the future. Some things have happened that have been hard for everyone.
And, you know, since it did, it was in the paper as one of the lead items, I think. I felt it really necessary to at least deal with it with the community as well on it so they understood where we're going. Okay, we have a motion by Kurt, seconded by Pat. All in favor of the proposed contract for twenty-twelve, twenty-fourteen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Jerry. Thank you. Item E, approval of the fall head coaches. The chance to look at those under attachment H. Make a motion that we approve for coaches. Motion by Pat. You're second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Brenda. Any other discussion?
I guess I do. Just wondering, last fall, I think it was, or last late summer, we had thought we'd set up an evaluation process for coaches and, you know, just to see how they're doing, how they're performing. How are we doing with that? Have we capitalized on that? Do we have those at hand? Do we know how the recommendations are, what people are saying, and coaches, how they perform?
Well, I'll let Tim kind of the majority of that, but I will say they are coming down. They are going into the Q folders for the teachers or personnel files, and they come in at the end of every season, and they're, they look really well done. I feel like as a reader on the outside, I feel like I'm getting a true picture of what's going on. So I think the process was good that you, you know, that we started that, but...
Yeah, this is the first group that went through that evaluation process. And Lee and I both see a lot of value in the way this process works because it really kind of forces everybody to come to the table and to talk about what's working and what's not working and what kinds of things need to be changed for the future. And I think that, you know, especially with us being the first group through that process, we had some really open, honest conversations with our coaches. And we're happy with the way that evaluation process is going at this point. So it's kind of, it's almost a three-step process. There's a preseason meeting. Then there's a self-evaluation of the coach and leaders, and then there's a postseason meeting. Josh has been through that process, and I don't know how you thought that went, but I see value in the way that that works together.
I thought it was a lot. Basically, the domain just kind of furrowed over, but yeah, we see the things I thought maybe went well or not so well. What I can prove on, I can give any suggestions of what we actually could have improved upon. At least, first your coach wants to look at this.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So all in favor of the approval of the fall head coaches, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Jerry. Approval to move the bank rotation to the January first date. Michael has picked up a little misprint there. The new bank rotation, around page forty-one. It could be merchants instead of First National. If you're paying attention, Michael.
I kind of phased it for doing that. It's at least as long as I've been in the business office. It's been all four banks, yes, for every three years you rotate the bank just to make sure that each one has changes that have to come. And it's always been fiscal year, and quite honestly, it's a real ask in the business office as far as especially now it was ACH payroll for sure, incoming wires for state funds, credit card things. That time of the year where you're getting ready for the audit, and you're carrying two accounts, you got a whole lot of funds in one account while the other one's opened up, you know, things clearly. It's just kind of a real hectic time fiscal year to change it. And it would be possible, it's much cleaner time for me and Kathy payroll to do it at the calendar year. Just more flexible and easier going for us to handle it. It's really more of a business office move to do it. All the banking still get the full three years. First round of markets, it actually just has the benefit of having the next six months out of this planning or if you guys decide to do it. It just makes it a lot easier for the business office to take care of the accounts and switching over all the electronic handling.
Okay?
I'll make a motion to move the bank rotation to the next year. I'll second.
Motion by Brenda, seconded by Jerry. Further discussion?
I would say it makes it easier to do a calendar year, a calendar year.
Okay, all in favor of the rotation change, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Jerry. Next page, approval of the revised twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve budget, attachment J.
Before Josh starts with this, because I want him to present this, some of you know that we were going to present the prelim budget for next year. We aren't ready to go on that, and we thought it would be more appropriate to do a revised budget from this year first. And then that projection model that Pat has asked for is ready to go. But again, we thought it would be better to do the revised budget first and then use the projection.
Actually, it was May twenty-third of last year for this fiscal year against what the revised budget is. As the year progresses, we kind of move funds around. Teachers get coated different areas. If certain areas need more money, others give up a little bit. And the other, you want an explanation of why things have changed and why the budget is different from what was adopted. So that's really the reason for the revised budget. They're going to need to see as a board approve the revised budget when they go through the audit. The summary sheet that you have, I just hand out here. The top's going to be summary of what revised budget is by the fund for revenues and expenditures. The middle is what the initial budget was from Mr. Sescar in May twenty-third that was approved for the district. And then the bottom are the changes that have just kind of summarized seventy-five pages of seventy-digit codes. What can I see with revenues and things get a little bit tighter, they move throughout the year. This is not going to be exactly how things will end up as we go through audit. Just simply because things from the state and the levy will change and adjust. But in general fund for revenues, we expect about ninety-six, ninety-seven thousand dollars to the good of what we used the budget for last year at this time. And expenditures to save about sixty thousand dollars in the general fund. For total, about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars to the good in the general fund for this fiscal year. And you'll see, there are a couple things that you can do. And Beth had mentioned about having a little extra fund by watching the pennies this year. And with the buses, you have maybe some decisions you can make through this fiscal year yet. Whether it be to pay for all the bus repairs that you have now would be something you could consider. Or even the OPEP trust. It's designed to last at least ten years. But you see, we withdraw the difference of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the OPEP trust which goes into the general fund. So really, there's only, if you were to take that OPEP out, it's sixty thousand dollars to the good in general fund. Or if you take out that transfer, it's just something that you could consider. But in general, through some cost-saving measures and some watching the pennies in the general fund, you've done pretty well this year. At least that's how it looks to be projected as of right now. Food service, going to be always behind, but they have a fund balance to begin the year with, and they're going to be okay. Community Ed, the difference there for the increase is really going to be the tax shift, and that's yet to be known. When we go through the audit, how much that's going to actually change, but it looks like they're going to get that thirty thousand dollars back. Not all this tax shift. Some of the things have changed by a reduction in expenditures, some by increase in revenue. Building construction, zeroed out. Debt service, you see a loss of almost two hundred thousand dollars in that was our decrease in the levy. We did that so that there wasn't a seven percent increase in the levy when it was approved. So that taxpayers had basically a zero with being or loss in the levy and to still fulfill our debt service needs. Trust and agency have decreased about sixty-three hundred dollars for the year. OPEP trust, again, we're set to draw a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars to help cover retiree benefits. And that goes directly into the general fund, and it would be a large, for your hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars increase in the general fund. And then the OPEP debt service, there was a negative balance last year, and that nine thousand dollars, they actually bring us back up to a pile, so we stay in traffic with that. So that's just kind of the summary page. In general, we tend to look a lot at the general fund because that is almost the majority of our budget, ninety-five percent of our budget is low to ten million dollars. Kind of the big numbers to note on the bottom, say big number, but they're small. In revenue, we're looking at adjustment of less than one percent from the original adopted budget last May to the revised budget currently here, and just over half of one percent in expenditures. So that's a pretty good, our DART, I was showing at the DART board last year for expansion revenues. But you get the adjustment of less than one percent in each of them. What I've done is, we've got a few pages here, and again, this is a larger version of, still a much condensed version on the seventy-five pages of Ed proposals. But the first page is going to be, forty-three, is expenditure budget for district-wide. And kind of see the net change that goes on here. I try to put a comment on each one that had adjusted, so it kind of gives you at least a direction to go to. And if you have any questions, anytime, you can stop and let me know. But in general, for the district-wide expenses, we're looking at an increase of about fifty-six thousand dollars in the original budget. Some of the different areas that can be for that is I increased the budget that we have for the Ed foundation. They support us pretty well this year, about sixty thousand dollars, increase the expenditures for that. You'll also see an increase in the revenue for that. It offsets each other, but it's not necessarily to be there so that for audit doesn't show that we have an expenditure that's too high for what we budgeted. There's a decrease in the OPEP amount. Originally, the budget had a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to withdraw. And when we first went through the finance committee to get the OPEP, we'd set half our subsidy at an explicit range is what we'd draw. And that's a hundred and twenty-six thousand. So I just adjusted that to what we're actually going to be withdrawing from the OPEP fund. Transportation, three thousand dollar increase, and that's adding two back, two routes. And then the charge, what happens at the end of the year, we take back charges for, you know, my bus for basketball. We went down trips and would take, take cost of transportation, put that back in basketball. And that has to be at net zero. So the expense that goes into the general activities has to equal what we take out. And they did match in original budget. I just adjusted that, and that's part of the increase in transportation as well. We go to the next page, and we've got expenses for the elementary. In all, a little over eleven thousand dollars in savings in the elementary. And there's going to be lots of changes there throughout here. A lot of it is salary and benefits whenever there's a change. And single health or dental versus a family, those things are going to change. Some of the big increases here is, one was the field trip account. And I just increased the finish to match what we here spending there. And again, that one's offset, so there's an increase on the revenue side as well. But again, just so that when the audit comes through, it doesn't show that we exceeded our budget by twenty thousand dollars in an area, so it's just set to match. A large part of the numbers that have changed are within special ed, and they've just kind of been allocated between the different programs. We don't necessarily always know exactly where a teacher's going to be coded, how we know what their P S O is. They had to tell us that they're forty-three percent E V D, twelve percent S L D, and break them all out. But a lot of that's just change within the funds. The ALC, not as much of the teacher's hour was coded to ALC as the original budget, as was probably necessary. And then I think there's an increase in program as well, so you'll see a thirty thousand dollar increase in the ALC. And that's all movement of salary and benefits from teachers from secondary into the ALC. So you'll see a corresponding reduction in the secondary for those teachers. Next page is going to be the secondary. In total, about a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars savings within secondary. Fifty thousand of that right off the top is for the movement to the ALC. It's just recoding teachers from secondary to the ALC. And then there is quite a large reduction in some special ed services. Again, it's matched what we have here. But those two things are really the main driving forces for the decrease in expenditures. Go on to just the next page here. Going to be the food service. Quite a large reduction in the staffing or in our salaries and wages and our employee benefits. And that's just kind of a, when you're doing a nice job, kind of what's going to stay out there. And some of it is going to be coding of administration. In the old budget, there was, the high school administrator was cored partially to the food service and majority to secondary administration. But this one is a hundred percent into the administration side to use the food service as well. I think a lot of it comes from being six-foot tall. Utilities increased in order to cover all the costs that have been kind of projected. But the big increase in food service is going to be for groceries and bills are paying to have food each month. You'll see a huge food industry state of twenty-five thousand dollars to Indian have to pay for groceries. Community Ed, going through there, and the expenditures between... Community ed, going through there and the expenditures between the adopted and revised, about $15,000 saving. And again, there's some cost-saving measures that have been included, um, from last year to this year that helped reduce some of that. A large part is going to be salaries and benefits. And the next one's really, there's not a whole lot of change and all those things are pretty tight when you, when you start out. Building construction, we're done with that, so there's nothing there. I just added 3, 14, 79. That was the balance there, so that's closed out and be zeroed out. Uh, debt service, $700 with a reduction in some fees, so it just got changed to the actual. The trust and agency, that's the scholarships. We got some increased scholarships, so I just increased to match the expenditure. OPEP trust, uh, this year based on the actuarial study, it should be $126,000 gets pulled out, so that just matches what we'll move into the general fund. And then debt service for the OPEP at 125, that's the actual debt service that we'll make for the OPEP fund. Uh, in total, we put all the funds together, about $80,000 savings from the original budget to this one, um, all funds combined. Again, really the large one that you guys probably mentioned is the general fund and that's about $60,000 savings and expenditures. And to keep going on to the revenue, or if you have questions on any expenditure stuff right now, I can try to answer that. Keep going. I get tired of my own voice sometimes. So many messages you guys are. Revenues and the general fund, uh, overall increase of about $97,000. And, uh, a large portion of this is just, uh, adjusting things to what M D has to date, not necessarily for the whole fiscal year, but to date, uh, it's a better picture than we were at this time last year for the adopted, uh, budget. Um, a couple of things that are in the local sources that are increases that weren't necessarily planned for or not as much as we received is some medical assistance funds, about $15,000. And then facility rental, we're at about $40,000 right now, that's to the good.
Say that one again, Josh.
About $40,000 for the facility rentals.
It's good to point it out. I'll make sure everyone heard that one.
Space versus a decrease of almost $80,000 and that's a large part of the M D, M D projections. Um, the federal sources, about $30,000 decrease and the reason being there is in May, when the budget was adopted, we had only planned on taking, uh, half, half of the Ed jobs money. And in June or July of, June of last year, we decided we'd take as much of the Ed jobs as long as we could. Well, that number's already set in the budget, so we had to decrease that. And that's the reason for the $30,000 decrease in federal sources. There you'll see people supporting increase of $38,000. That's to balance out the Ed Foundation at about $60,000 if they go into the district this year for funding projects that they normally wouldn't. General athletics, about $17,000 increase from the original budget and a large part of that is people are buying more athletic passes rather than showing up at the game, showing $6, paying the, the season pass. Boys athletics, just a small increase. I gotta get more people in the stands for basketball. Girls athletics, did pretty well, um, and so we can project a bit higher for that. So overall, general fund, about $97,000, $97,000 increase. Food service has to go here, about $20,000 increase in the district-wide portion. A large reason for that is the more people on free and reduced lunch and that's a benefit to the district as far as funding come down. Um, elementary and secondary both reduced. Um, I just couldn't get the numbers to match right, right now for projections. You may come in, we may get a lot of people to clean up for accounts at the end of the year and M D helped to balance it out, but right now it's going to get to the same number as adopted. Overall, food service, about $30,000 increase in, in revenue, decrease in revenue. Community ed, a lot of this stuff is just trying to adjust things to levy or the M D, M D projected or added right now. Um, it looks like it'd be about an increase of about $21,000. And some of that is camp kids fees that we received. Some of it is projected for the tax shift. Hopefully they give most of all of that, um, would help all the community budget. Um, but again, it won't plan that until we have to see the final audit, but as we see right now, about $21,000 increase from the, on the revenue side from the original. And then as you go through the next one, again, they're usually ones that are pretty tight as you go through, uh, building construction. Zeroed out, so we have nothing in that, the project is, is complete. Uh, debt service, again, we know what we were going to have for levy on that, so that stays zero. Uh, local sources for trust and agency, the scholarship fund, uh, we've got some increased scholarships, so we increased the revenue side on that. Um, probably a little decrease in what we're going to see for revenue for interest on the OPEP, uh, so we dropped that from $12,000 to $9,000. And then the OPEP debt service fund, we just adjust that to what we're actually receiving for those debt service payments. In total, all funds, about $108,000 increase revenue from the adopt. Again, that equals just under 1% total change from adopted to revised. Uh, again, you're probably looking more at what's happening in the general fund for that and that's $97,000. So, um, if you look at just the general fund, you look at about $177,000 that you would see if things were to be right now based on the projections, your fund balance would increase. And again, $170,000, that is your old thing, it's just a transfer, but, um, it's kind of right right now. And again, a large portion of the reason why we have to have it revised, not only so we kind of keep track of ourselves where we're at and how we're doing, uh, but for audits, we're going to want to know why the changes numbers from beginning to end and what was the, for the, so. If you have any questions, hopefully some comments are going to help you out and hopefully you'll come through that. Obviously I'll too, but if you have questions, I'll try to do my best to answer them.
Josh works really hard on this revised budget, so I just want to thank him too. He does a really, really nice job with this.
Kind of what we're looking for, we do expenditures, increase revenue. I guess, I guess.
Thanks for all the notes you put in there.
Best question I've answered.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a positive revision. And it's, it's due to everybody's work and administration and, uh, well, all of our employees as well. So, uh, this is good.
Well, I think just getting that out there, you know, we have so many people that, are you really renting it? Are you really, are your rental fees really coming in for that? You know? It is. And we might have to go to Dave and say we need more custodial services because we are, the buildings are getting really, really busy. So that's a, it's a good thing for Camp Falls.
The 40th rental is that relative to the past one?
I, because I didn't check to see what the past was. I know, I couldn't tell you what the Zapper like to say this higher than the, the previous year. I couldn't tell you the exact number for how much that has increased.
Dave, what would you say the increase is, uh, facility use as far as rental or Jake? Either one, you can speak to it.
I don't take care of the rental side.
In some, in some ways.
Yeah, again, when the increase is part of activity and stuff like that.
Would you say we're up 50% pre-facility times instead?
Oh, we're getting close to that, yeah. Yeah, there's something going on and it's good. That's what we're here for and stuff like that, but, um, yeah. Rental side, that would be one.
Hey, youth athletics, um, is a big thing. It's a, it's a big part of it. Red Wing actually used their tennis courts a couple of weekends ago, going after their tennis courts. Um, basketball tournaments, stuff that we have. Sit on the chamber commerce, other chamber, there's a showcase in the building this year. Um, road rituals that are made in, in high school for the last two years. Anything like that.
Quite busy. Last week we had basketball tournament, completely non-Camp Falls. Yeah, I know a couple of kids are participating in it, but not Camp Falls teams. And, um, you have 42 basketball teams this spring playing going on, um, our festival coming around the corner, um, just a lot of activity inside the building, so.
Must have been a ball tournament too, because I got taught, I got stopped when I was out for my walk in the morning and they were looking for the ball fields and.
It's a softball tournament, same way you can have basketball play. Very fun game.
Do you see uniforms downtown regardless of what they're playing and then looking for a place to eat or just a place to sit down? Just, uh, you know, it starts here at the school and they're here all day, so there's, there's other effects just from our facilities.
How has, um, real quick touching on that, how has the rule been getting by with no food and all that stuff? Has it been, I know early on we had trouble with food being taken into field house. I mean, are we still fighting that battle or?
Oh, it's gotten better. You know, you're never going to stop it completely, but it has gotten better and stuff like that. Some of the events we tried to set up, so it is a little bit easier by putting tables close to the field house rather than going all the way to the path period or whatever, but, um, and it's, uh, just we haven't had a problem with it or an issue with it in any other events.
Well, I see really good numbers here, so I'm going to make a motion. Motion by Pat.
Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the revised budget? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Approval of the tenure list attachment K.
Yeah, you see the one teacher that is circled down there. Um, he is a fourth grade teacher. Um, as a parent of a fourth grader, I will tell you, he has done a phenomenal job. Um, this Vic is not here tonight, but she would echo that. He is just kind of a real asset to the fourth grade team and, and the building in general. He also, I think, and maybe Jerry can move to that, but did a, a good job with a, a girls' basketball team that's low in numbers and a lot of other things. So, overall, as a coach and as a teacher, really, really pleased with Eric Mace and it would be our recommendation to give him tenure.
He would again be the only one.
He'd be the only one, correct.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Kurt. Depending to Eric Mace.
Correct.
Correct. Any other discussion?
He comes in with eight years of experience.
Montgomery Longska?
So what is the rule of that experience? If they come in, what's seniority or?
In a general, we give up to, um, so many years on our contract, um, depending on position. You know, if Mr. Hodges comes and we just had this conversation last week and we've got someone that we really need in a specialty position, um, we try to offer more years to make it more enticing for them to come here. Um, an elementary teacher, you know, hundreds of applicants, so a lot of times we don't always give that experience, but we do have kind of general procedures that we go to, but ultimately it's the superintendent decides where they want to put them on that scale and then you, you approve it.
Student performance is then you give a.
Absolutely. Anne wanted to say that she's done three, we have a non-tenure teacher, there's three evaluations and I have, I have also gone in and done one and I just, and again, as a parent of a fourth grader, I really see some great, great things going on in his room.
Does a nice job with the girls' basketball.
Sure does.
Law on numbers. Mike can a little bit tell if he can move that one.
Okay, we have a motion in the second on the floor for the tenure of Eric Mace. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Approval of the fundraiser list for 2012-2013 attachment L.
Yeah, Lee wanted to be here tonight, but he's at a golf banquet. It's kind of that time of the year, the season is wrapping up. He wants to know, nothing new on here? There are a couple that say to be announced and that is simply because they did not pick their exact fundraiser, but they are applying for one. And if you remember, the overall rules is you have to, whatever you have on you, you can't add to it, but you can substitute if you already have one on there. So the, um, to, to be determined, um, they just haven't selected exactly what they're doing yet, so.
We've been on the list, they may have another fundraiser.
You know, like the first one, you'll see girls' basketball, well, it's a new coach. Now he's got the system down. Maybe he doesn't want to, whatever girls' basketball did this year for their fundraiser, maybe he doesn't want to sell cookie dough or whatever it is, um, he's going to do something different, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the fundraisers.
I'll second.
Motion by Brenda, seconded by Pat. Other discussion?
We put a possible asterisk at the bottom on the very last page and I guess I'm not sure what wording you'd want to use, but we always tend to have, uh, different groups that need the last minute fundraiser. Seen that this year with, uh, yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't know if that's something we need to add, we don't need to add, don't matter.
I would, I don't want to encourage that as much as we can. I mean, Ed Foundation is a good resource for them, I think, in dire states emergencies. I don't know if Tim's agreeing or disagreeing with me, but, um, those dire straits, I think, are okay. I think if we start adding on, well, an asterisk, it may open up a can of worms that way.
Okay.
It's worked out really well, so.
With the way the people and.
You bet.
That's fine.
That's a good point.
And it's hard to, it's hard to be able to predict whether, for example, either people is going to need to, and then do a fundraiser because you can hear it based on your performances in the state competition. So, you know, I think it's worked well the last two years to have him come in and present to you, um, as an admission to the, to the law system.
Okay. Motion in the second. All in favor of the fundraising list for 2012-2013? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Approval to hire Brian Moss as a 1.0 high school math physician for 2012-2013?
Yes, Brian interviewed, uh, we had, uh, we went through quite a few candidates to get to Brian and Brian was a good gem in the bunch, so if I would please.
I'll make a motion to approve. Or something happened to him.
Sorry. Motion by Pat, seconded by Kurt. Kurt, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Approval to hire Lisa Emress for 1.0 secondary D C D position for 2012-2013?
Again, very small, very small applicant pool for this position and she, um, by far was a great candidate and I share him as one of the group of people that interviewed. She had a very nice shot and she's, um, brings some experience, um, so that's good for us, so she's, it's going to be a great hire for us.
Make a motion to Kurt.
I'll second. Motion by Brenda, seconded by Pat. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Item M, approval of the resignation of Deb, Deb Swigum at the end of the 2011-2012 school year.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I'll second. Pat, motion, Kurt, second. Deb's been with us a long time, I think it merits a little discussion.
Yeah, Deb is a remarkable teacher and she's a great asset to the district and she will be sorely missed in social studies.
How many years has she had with us?
I would have to go, I've been here 12 and she took a break in there and then she went to point eight. I'd have to find out for sure, it's been a long time.
You're right, we'll miss her. I'll make the motion.
Well, we got a motion in second and so now we're ready for the roll call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried.
That's the line to Deb.
Item N, update HBL Three Rivers football reorganization.
Well, this has been very fun for me. I put a little synopsis in here. Basically what has happened, and this has been a, a process that was started a while back, but this year has included a lot of meetings with, um, the HBL superintendents and then recently brought in the athletic directors as well. Um, we have decided and voted that we are going to be one football conference. It's based off of size, not distance. And the reason why I point that out is that you'll note the schools that voted no, Camp Falls was one of them. I did vote no for this for the simple fact is this is going to cost us money to do that. The schools that you're driving to are going to be farther away. A local person, I kind of like a local border battle. We are placed in section one with all the biggest schools. Um, as you see them listed there, they're listed in size. We are, um, Plainview, El Jamilville will be the only pre-rivers school that'll be in this conference, but we will be playing, um, not against our border battle teams that we're used to. And it does concern me, um, from a revenue standpoint, that people aren't going to be coming to our gates maybe as much. Um, it's also very fun when you play, can you want to go, for example, for the ground jug? Those type of things mean a lot to this community. So these decisions were not made easily.[1753.44] So these decisions were not made easily. It is for football only. They'll try it out for a few years, they may look at it for basketball and a few other things, was discussed at those meetings, but right now, it's just football. Good Hugh has submitted to be a part of Section Two. We all know that they can compete very well in Section Two, they don't need to be in Section Three at all, but based off of size, they're in Section Three. The way they're going to allow you to do that is if you request to be in a different section, someone has to be willing to swap or trade with you. I am also planning on submitting to be a part of Section Two, but I would need to have someone that's willing to go up to Section One and play Cassin-Mannerville, Stewartville, and Plainview. Some big schools again. So, we'll see where that goes. Again, I voted no on this for reasons of distance. It's, it will cost a little bit more, but certainly, our football program is well attended. It makes money, we're going to be okay. But I thought it was important tonight, not a lot we can do on this, it's a ready for reorganization that, you know, the votes landed where they landed, and we're going to support this and...
What's the driving behind this?
Um, you know, it came mostly out of some of the smaller schools like Hayfield. Their guys are playing offense and defense at the same time. They don't have enough guys to be on the, on the field. So unfortunately, they can compete really well in basketball, but can't compete as well in Hayfield, or is in, in football. And so, some of the smaller schools really started it, then you've got same population as Good Hugh, and they compete really well. So it just kind of depends on where you're from. And the other thing where it came up is La Crescent being a part of our district, our conferences, and us being the most north, you've got this distance. And so, it really spun off when Winona Carter left two months ago, three months ago now. Winona Carter, as everyone knows, went ahead and joined Three Rivers. So we now have the odd number instead of them having the odd number. I think it was kind of assumed that, um, La Crescent-Pocra would go with them. It doesn't look like they're going to, so we will have that off game, and they've got that kind of worked out too, where we'll have a zero week. That MEA Wednesday typical game that you're used to will be kind of a little different now, so. The driving force came from a lot of different directions. I would say the north side of everything didn't want to drive all the way to the south side. The south side already has to drive up to La Crescent, they already have to drive up to Byron, they already have to drive up to these other towns, so it wasn't as big of a deal for them. We're going to be going much further south.
So this is a done deal?
It is. It's more informational for you, it's very important that you know what's going on if you're approached by the community.
How often are they going to evaluate? Your PI is Section Two with the biggest enrollment, we're at the bottom. Are we going to see a flip flop over the next couple of years?
We could, and I can give you that data sheet. The difference between Cannon Falls and Pine Island right now is about 27 kids. We're going to see where things go. Our enrollment went up this year, theirs went down. They were projected to go up, and we were projected to go down. So you never know where enrollment's going to really land. They are going to reevaluate every two years, and we're going to reevaluate if we want to go back to our own conferences in two years.
You know, sitting down in the meetings up in the school board, you go to the Minnesota State High School League, bring them if they give, and their talk, several years back even, you know, is trying to get in the conferences where teams are closer because of the money and the cost of transportation. Now look at this and see that we're going to be running further than what we've ever gone before. Just kind of reverse everything that they're talking about, don't we?
And we miss it by 27 kids, to be honest. I mean, we're in the biggest section, which is good, we do have a lot of students, but, I, I am submitting to be in Section Two, I'll keep you updated on that. I won't know to our next HBL meeting if that's granted or not. Promise Good Hugh's also trying to get into Two, so we'll see who wants to, who wants to go from there. But I would like the border battles, you know, obviously, some of them is up on here, Canyon Wannamingo. We like playing Lake City, you know, we play the Tigers every year of some kind for homecoming, it seems like, so. Uh, we've got a few in there. We'll, we'll see where it goes, I'll keep you updated. I did submit for that, we'll see if we're granted or not.
Well, it, it looks like two between Section One and Section Two, they can do some crossover, get an eight football game, I hope they do that. And, and allow, you know, for, for a, a brown jug game
Sure.
to continue on every year, home and, you know, home and away, or whatever.
They're going to allow you to find your own eight, the athletic director's already working on that. For example, Cassin-Mannerville has gotten so big now that eventually, they're going to have to, to go. Well, you know, we aren't sure of that or anything, but they would like to almost play like an Albert League or a Faribault or something like that, so that they get that experience with the bigger schools, so. I think everyone's going to be in charge of kind of finding that eight game on their own.
Unfortunately, if we move down to Section Two, we're still going to St. Charles, Lewis, and Chapel Hill and Dover.
I did, I did add up the miles, though, we are, we would be better in Section Two, but maybe it's because I'm from Pine Island, and I just want to make sure we play Pine Island, I'm just kidding.
All right, so there's no action to take, huh?
There's not, it's just information. I thought it was really important for you to know, um, what's going on.
Okay, let's move down to item O, approval to hire Jamie Winchell for a .75 literacy, literacy .25 PAC position for the upcoming school year.
I don't know if I could be more thrilled than this action item tonight. Jamie Winchell has been with the district for quite some time. The DAC position has currently been on the elementary principal. It's taken that person out of the building a lot. Jamie is looking at going into administration down the road and a few other things, and she's definitely a leader in our school. So for her to take on this position, people like her, they're going to follow her lead in literacy, and I just think she's, when I heard that she applied for this position, I couldn't have been more thrilled. Great, great candidate.
Does that position require a reading license?
It does not. There'll be some of that literacy money that we talked about. But she has an extensive background in literacy and, and really done some unique things, Daily Five, and some things that she's brought to Cannon Falls from her training, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Jerry. Other discussion? All in favor of this hire, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Kerry. Item P, approval to post and hire a second grade teaching position for the 2012-13 school year.
So Jamie's a second grade teacher, creates an opening. On Wednesday, we're going to be interviewing for fifth grade. We also, at the same time, will be looking out for candidates for second grade. There is some internal movement going on right now, that might be, end up being a different grade level, but as it stands tonight at this time, it looks like second grade is open. Again, you know, if we don't find the right candidate in those fifth grade interviews, it'll be important that we go out and interview again, but great candidates that apply.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Kurt, seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Kerry. Approval of the client retainer agreement between Cannon Falls and Marco for the upcoming year. It's the last attachment, I think.
All that is, is your summer rates, if we need to call in Marco for anything. Very standard, you've seen it every single year. It gives us a better rate for the summer, a better rate if you need to call them in, all of those kind of things. It's not a contract, it's an agreement for hours.
I'll second. Motion by Brenda, seconded by Pat. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Kerry. Approval of the 2012-2014 contracts for the following, CE director. That was, um, Kurt, or no, not Kurt, Rob and Pat?
Rob and I did, yes. We don't have any attachments.
Who would like to speak to this?
Well, I, I think this one was an interesting situation. We hadn't had a licensed community director before. We had had a, someone that was on a waiver, Jake's in the room, done just a great job. We did make some cuts, you know, we didn't have Dawn Wetteren come back, we were contracting her up from, from Red Wing, so some cost savings. We also had, you know, a change between secretaries and things like that. So there's been a lot of savings within community ed, but rightfully so. I look at it kind of like going from a student teacher to a teacher. The pay needs to be somewhat similar to that. I thought that the people that negotiated Jake's contract did a really nice job. We still have the lowest paid community director anywhere in the area, but again, he loves his job here like we all do and, and wants to do what's best for Cannon Falls, so we were really excited that we could take his salary and over the course of the two years, you know, get him up to a fair amount, but it's still certainly not going to be anywhere near what anyone else makes. The position included no new language, so it was pretty cut and dry.
I mean, actually, it's a, like you say, it's kind of a reshuffling of funds, if you will. We were, we were paying, I think, fifteen thousand dollars contractually to, to essentially a hard time for your school.
And I think it would have been nice to just move that fifteen over, but our negotiators did a nice job saying, you know, we can't just because we save fifteen thousand, move it over like that. And, and that's tough to do, because we want to obviously pay our employees what they're worth, it's just sometimes it can't, it's not as easy as moving fifteen thousand dollars over. Thought the process went really well.
So we're, we're ahead of the game.
We're way ahead of the game, way ahead of the game. And thankful to Jake.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve. I was, sat in and did the negotiations with Jake, and I'm real comfortable with the final agreement that he and I and Rob concluded.
Got a motion by Pat, a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Further discussion? You know, I, I think we need, we need to say it was a, it was a 5K, 5K increase. I think that's important that we,
That is.
that we discuss, at least throw that out there.
So I feel like I'm not getting very much information, even though I trust.
Sure.
And there's not very much information to give, actually, except brutal negotiations, I guess, so.
It was 5K, 5K.
We'll reward him for taking all of the, the education necessary to get us that licensure into the, into the district so we could maintain
Well, I totally support it.
our, our community education programs, which I think are fantastic, actually.
No, I totally support it, I just didn't really know what you're talking about.
Yep, and it does merit the conversation, because, you know, there's, there's some contracts that are, that are accepting a zero-zero. But this was a commitment that we made based on the information that we had at the time, and again, we're saving money here from, from having a person come over for that 15K stipend, so I think overall, we're, we're doing well with this. Got a motion from Pat, a second from Jerry. And we've had discussion. All in favor of the contract for the CE director, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Kerry. Executive, executive assistant HR coordinator. This, I guess would be very similar to the CE director. When we, uh, when we had a search committee for the superintendent, it was decided that we would lessen one administrator. It was also the recommendation of the, um, search committee panel, which was myself, Dick Peterson, and Dick McGuire, that we had to make up somewhere. You just can't lose a principle without making I guess, expanded job descriptions. Now, much of this has fallen on the administrators and Jake, but an equal, Josh, an equal number has, has fallen on Lori. She has had the same position and title for many, many years, but, um, not a position increase. And it's, it's long overdue, and the title is long overdue. She's been our HR person for a long, long time. So, you know, when we were, when we were dealing with this during the, I guess, discussions as to who we were going to hire as superintendent, in order to get this done, we really need to expand some positions and job duties, and this was one of them. So, um, I've been involved in this, and this is also, um, a 5K, 5K increase.
First year is 4,800, second year is 52. Backload it.
Semantics.
Sure.
So, and again, that was, uh, we've talked about this from the time that we hired Beth, and understanding at some point in time when these contracts were dealt with, we would have to deal with this increase. So it's nothing that is catching us by surprise, I guess.
She also has taken on every duty except answering some phone calls that the high school office has taken on, but Sam, our receptionist, was 30,000. We have not replaced that position. But all of those duties have gone on to Lori, so, uh, for 4,800, probably a good bank for the buck.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Motion by Brenda. Seconded by Jerry. Other discussion?
I just want to clarify, with this position, should, should, let's say that, um, there gets to be so much work that, that Lori cannot handle, that we hire someone else, does the position reflect the appropriateness of the paid increase? You know what I'm saying? Is, it sounds like she's on the low end, or she's?
She's very low. She's still very, very low compared to other people. I, what you're asking, though, is say, for some reason Lori left, could another person come in and do it all, or would we have to replace it with two people?
Correct, or if, if, let's say, well, she just can't, the question is, is she able to handle the tasks at hand? Or is it also something where we look at, look, if she can't handle this, should we hire someone else to meet the needs? Or if she can handle it, what happens is when someone comes in and she takes over those duties, now we're having someone that's getting paid this plus, now there's another 30,000 going out. Are we, you know, sometimes we get ourselves in trouble because of what our job descriptions are.
Sure.
You know, and just want to make sure that's all in balance.
This, this year has been a good test for that, I think. I think, um, she's done that all year, so it was kind of a testing the waters kind of thing, which helps. But you make a really good point, because I've always thought that if she left, it is one of those odd positions that we've now taken three positions and put it into one, and a, um, just learning curve on that alone. I don't know if you could do it with one. But again, that might be the chance you take to, um, you know, I look at the things we've added to Jake and Josh and me, and I think you could say that probably about anybody, but for 4,800, um, we're getting that, so. It's a great question, Kurt, I don't know if I could answer that.
And I, I think when we look at the, uh, the job description of some of the other Lories in our HBL, we see that she's got a much broader job description. She handles more of our duties than like people in, uh, in several other districts, so, you know, I'm sure she'd feel really good about losing some of those duties if we wouldn't need to hire somebody, but her job has expanded so much from when I began and when she began, that, um, you know, she essentially was our office secretary, and now she made her way up here, and there hasn't been a, an increase that's been justified in quite some time.
No, I think she's done a great job, I just want to make sure that we're cautious.
Yeah, I, I, good point. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Kerry. Head of operations and maintenance.
Well, I did this one. It was really rough sitting down with Dave. He took 0%, 0%, total heart freeze, no language changes, and is about as dedicated to this district as anyone I can get. I think he understands where we are financially. Great guy, was really hard negotiating, but we made it through. And again, like the custodians, I'm just really grateful that everyone's stepping up to the plate and, and taking some of these freezes, because we've got some crazy things going on right now, so. Very appreciative.
I'll second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Kurt. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Kerry. Head cook.
I negotiated Wendy Robinson. She will be at 18 dollars and then 18-18. She's got an 18 cent increase that equals 1% and 1%. No language changes.
And she, she truly is the head cook. She's the head of all facilities now.
Yeah, because we, we, we did not replace Lynn when she left.
And that is why I'm justifying the, the 1%.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Motion by Pat, seconded by Brenda. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Kerry. Food service employees.
Um, this one was, this one was interesting. We met several times, actually, and, um, and the last time we met, all of the cooks were able to come. There has been a, a benefit that has been in place for cooks for a really long time. Can't really find out if it's legal or not, or if it really should be done, but all cooks have been getting a free meal, breakfast, lunch, whatever, for a really long time. Um, if you figure that out, three dollars a day, times 174 days, it's 522 dollars per person. Savings of 88.74. Um, I did ask the cooks to remove that from their contract. I think it's important, you know, our teachers don't get to take markers from the classroom, you know, it, it just can't, we just can't have things like that in the contract, so, um, we stayed in tune with the head cook, it did 1% and 1% because they are down people, and so they are doing more work with less people. But we did remove the free lunches at a cost savings of 88, and that's just for lunch. If they were to eat breakfast, it'd be more than that, but that's not consistent, but 88 hundred dollars we saved on that contract.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Pat, you're hot. I'll second.
Matt. Motion, seconded by Jerry. Other discussion? Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is Kerry.
And thanks to that crew, that actually was a big thing, and, and... That actually was a big thing, and, and they did negotiate really well, but we, we met a lot of times, so really thankful to everything they do for our kids.
Special route drivers.
That, I, it was new to me. We have special ed drivers, we have yellow bus drivers, and we have a transportation coordinator. We have three separate contracts, so that's really fun to get into, but I, I did get special route drivers done. They are, oh, bus drivers were the only people to take a freeze last round, if you remember correctly. They all took a freeze the last two times. I did offer them 1%. That takes them from 17 dollars and 53 cents to 17 dollars and 88 cents. Just marginal, but it does equal 1%. They also came in requesting to get more mileage, and I did not do that, so negotiations, we took that out. So other than that, no language changes, 1% and 1%.
Special ed.
Special ed.
Proponic motion to approve. Motion by Kurt. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Second by Pat. Other discussion?
Why did they subray the special, uh, road drivers and yellow buses?
Oh, there's so many reasons I learned about. We can talk sometime, but it, there is, it's about routes and different wages, and then special ed, you know, they go out twice a day, but sometimes they go out three or four times a day depending on need.
But they didn't happen two years ago, did it?
Yeah, this has been two rounds of this now. Yeah, yeah. I would like to get them back on one contract, and that'll be my goal next time. To be honest, it's just 17 contracts right now. Like, it's a lot. So I'd like to get them back on. And actually, transportation coordinator could actually be in the same contract, too, because the benefits are the same.
One, you know, the, 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 the school standards and the, the, the school standards being two separate contracts.
There are a few things I didn't know about. We can talk about this later, but yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. We ended discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Jerry.
Now, just by curiosity, do you have an idea what these increases would amount to in the next year?
I'm going to wait until I get them all done. I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of the 17 done. I'd really like to get them all done and show differences from last year to this year. I'm estimating substantial savings. I kind of, I kind of want them all done before I start throwing out numbers.
Under reports, board members, anyone have anything for the cause? Just like to thank, so I don't refer to time here. Good luck to them, sir. Endeavors. Thanks to the, on the pleasure of the district that even took the pay raise or just, uh, 74%. Congratulations to the loyal hires.
Thank you, Jerry. Um, we met just before this meeting for the strategic planning committee. And I were there, and some representatives from the, the school, and basically, what we're going to start doing for the first, before, prior to the first meeting, or the next meeting coming up, will to develop or come up with a different strategic, or missionary, mission statement. That's going to be the first on the agenda, and then we can work out for that mission statement as to where we want to go, setting our goals, deciding where our values are, and, and going from there. We're going to meet once a month, and this is going to be at least a year process, if not longer. So just so we, if you want to comment, too, that's just so we do it right.
Well said.
Okay, anyone else? Michael, you're up.
Just a few quick things. The last two weekends was the school play, Our Town, which was sponsored by Community Ed, and that went well. Also, last weekend, the high school art department sponsored an art show, which was located in the high school atrium. And if you didn't go out and see that, you really missed out because there were a lot of awesome pieces and a lot of talent was displayed. Tomorrow, the track team has subsections, and finally, next Friday, May 1st is graduation. June 1st, yes.
Okay, we get to that time, upcoming meetings, anything?
I still get to talk about shirts or ties or...
Yeah, you know, we, we missed that upcoming, the graduation coming up. I'm not sure who won't be here besides me, but I have a previous commitment. All right, I'm more fishing. There's nothing wrong with that. It's been scheduled for 10 years now.
I'm going to give them the whole schedule for the whole year now. You'll be getting an email from Deb Clegg and as far as official details, and Pat's been through it a million times, but they, they'll send a list with everything.
Yeah, you just already sent one out.
Oh, okay.
It went attached.
Great.
Yep.
Oh, good.
So upcoming items here, you can see them for the upcoming meeting. Does anyone have anything, any additions to that?
Just be aware that, you know, keep your eyes on Highway 19, where we have our board meetings might get kind of tricky with them tearing up 19. They're waiting till the kids are out, which is great, but...
What, how much are they tearing up?
Quite a bit.
Really?
So, we'll see. We should still have access, and we can always get through the student, but I might actually hold another meeting down here. It's not great for projection models and having the whiteboard, but you can get here really easily, so keep your eyes on that, where the board meetings will be held at.
Tim, you're not listed. You got anything for the cause at all?
Uh, prom went very, very well. That was very nice. Like, if you guys can, before you leave today, to take a wander through some of our ALC rooms. I don't know how many of you have been able to see that since, kind of, we configured here, but that was the whole goal, was that have you to take a look at our ALC program. We actually have students that are in high school tonight, so it's even better to see how things are working, so.
Good prepared and have us knows around.
We'll be there.
I want to piggyback off that just a second. Tim did a nice job. I asked him last week, had all the area superintendents come by and put them kind of on the spot and have them give a tour, because we're really looking at recruiting a couple of schools in the area that have schools within a school, and it's, and that means the kids are going to the same building that the other high school, high school kids are at. And so Tim did a really nice job selling our school, and I thought the superintendents were very, very impressed with his presentation. So again, it's just getting that word out there that this ALC can be more and more and more, and it is every single year growing. So thank you to Tim for doing such a nice job with those superintendents. Thank you very much, David.
Well, I appreciate the past and present admins, because there was, uh, there was pressure on us after the first year of the ALC and probably the second year that it was not pulling its weight.
Yep.
And we all knew that with time, it would be good, but, but it takes a little time to roll now, but credit recovery has been boon to us, and, you know, increased enrollment here, and if we can bring in some new money, all the better for us, but this, this, I'm, I'm glad the board stayed the course and the recommendation of the admins to stay the course in this, because this is, this is paying us back.
The way I look at it, we own 65 licenses. This is my online hiring provider that we have, and we're using 62 of those licenses right now. That's 62 kids that we're able to service that we haven't been able to service in a traditional school setting at the high school, so it really does pay off, you know, maybe not monetarily, but it does pay off in a lot of ways.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Public forum, those wishing to speak, can have a couple of minutes. Ralph?
I live in all the districts and I'm honored to have our agreements that they all possess.
You know, I can't speak to it. Public forum is more of a, more of a statement of whatever goes on. I, I'm not really able to make that conversation right now. I don't have anything in front of me. It's not part of our agenda items. Your concerns, our past benefits that you say are due.
Sick time and vacation time.
Yes.
Okay, I guess the best we can say is we can take it under advisement. You've been speaking on, on that.
He's been mostly with Kathy Holmes, but I can get more details.
I've got all the documentation.
Do we have documentation?
Yes, and I have documentation of a lot of the things I have been addressed.
Well, we definitely paid vacation time because that's part of the severance package. And when we switched from exact to non-exact, we did pay out for those things. I think we're just struggling with how, how do we pay out for sick time when that's not a part of the contract?
I was not very concerned. As you recall, I have blackmail, record, intimidating, and I'm discriminated against for the past two years plus. And you're asking me to look at a new contract, go through my protection, which there was none, which as employers, I feel you have the duty to create a safe, working environment.
I think at this point in time, we certainly can listen to your documentation about monies that you feel that are doing you, but we're not going to get into anything that is over because I think we've all attempted to move on here, including you, with, with new employment. So, you know, I'd be more than happy to sit in with the soup on this and just to review it, but other than that, I don't think we're going to get into that conversation this evening. That's not what public forum is designed to do, but your point is well.
I guess I misunderstood. It's a, anything that wasn't on the agenda.